Sorry, I didn't hear you.
I'll call the September Planning Board meeting to order. Welcome all those in attendance. We do have a quorum here. Patrick Cooker let me know that he is sick this evening and is not in attendance. So, at this time, we would need to vote on any absentee member.
I make a motion, we approve Pat's.
Second.
Alright, so we have a motion and we have a second, any discussion? There is none, so at this time I'd ask for a vote on approving the absence of Patrick. All those in favor by saying aye.
Aye.
Anyone opposed? There are none. Bear with me, I'm making some notes. Alright, at this time, we would need to call an alternate to fill Patrick's place. Patrick is a...he's in town, so our alternate that is in town would step in in his place. So at this time, I'm gonna call Larue Weber. That's all I got.
Okay, good. That's my first.
It's like my second meeting, so.
Being called off the bench.
Okay, you're good.
You're in the big game now.
Okay.
Alright, so if I... If I would turn our attention to our minutes. So I went through them today. Do have a couple of things. For, and I don't know if this is because we had to swear in yet, but I noticed that Larue, Larue's not mentioned as present. Was that because she hadn't been sworn in yet?
Yes, she was not officially a member until she was sworn in.
Okay.
That's why she's under attending.
Okay, alright, just wanted to make sure.
Yeah, that's what I said.
So on page 387. It says, kinda right in the middle of the page, let's see how many lines up. Thirteenth line up, right in the middle, it says, "I think we need to be through." That should be thorough. And I'm sure.
Gotcha.
That may be from, if it dictates.
Let's see if it's your copy, because I've got the other one.
Okay.
I think, I think mine was missed there. I want to say, I need to control the volume on this third. It was through.
No problem, it's corrected.
Okay. As long as it's on your copy, which is gonna be a recorded copy.
Yeah, I did, I fixed it.
Alright.
Do you want, if I've got something before that page, do you want?
Yeah, 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 I apologize.
No, it's okay, I just didn't know if you wanted to go through.
Just do it one more time, it'll probably be a lot easier.
Well, okay, we can do that.
On the first page?
Okay, first page.
We had five, down there was this chairman, Brian Weaver, under public comment. Stated we don't have any bills. I got Q V S T S.
Yep, that is the wrong.
It's under, under, look on the public comment. I see it, I got it.
No, I can find it, yeah, I can find it.
And then on the bottom line, first says, "We had a complaint." It says, "We have a complaint about the usual place."
I guess that should be, "We had a complaint about..."
Two us.
Two us.
About the usual place.
And then on the same sentence, which is down the street with the trailers. I guess it should be in the mobile home court. It starts with the trailers, the mobile home court.
Gotcha.
The first line, Brian.
Okay, yeah, I see it.
We don't always speak in complete sentences, too.
Yeah, and I realize this.
Y'all have a lot of you knows, and okay's, and you know, you know, you know, you know.
So, I figure.
Y'all have a crap ton of those.
I mean, I don't know how you, I don't know if you have a program that dictates off the YouTube, so it may pull someone's.
I do not dictate it off of YouTube.
Alright, I did 387.
If I have a problem hearing somebody, then I will go through it to YouTube and try to hear it better off of that. But as a norm, I use that recording in my notes.
Okay.
And we went through 87, I got something else on the next.
Okay, alright.
I need to count the number of lines down, let's see. Sixteen, sixteen.
Okay.
It says, "But I'm not going to be rushed to do it. I think we need to be thorough." And then it says, "I've been a part of this a piece of time." That didn't make sense.
That was what Jordan said.
Yeah, Brian and I were going back and forth, just saying, just about the process.
I didn't get to listen to it.
Yeah, I had to listen to it.
Yeah, I had to go back and listen to it.
Then the next line, we're about, right close to the end of the line. "We had gentlemen from the..." I figured it'd be, "We had a gentleman from the cog club." Okay.
Fix that too.
We're on that page.
Brian, you got anything else on the page?
I don't.
I had the same one, y'all did the, just the thorough. And I think I had the same thing already.
Yeah, I read it.
I'll check it out.
How about, let's see, that was, anything on 388?
Yeah, I don't remember what it is right here, I could've questioned him if I should've ruled it out. One, two, three, four. Fourth line from the bottom. The sentence above it starts, "Chairman Awer stated that is what we are approving, the permit, then the period."
Did what?
So it says, Chairman Awer stated so that is what we are approving. The permit, then the.
Chairman Awer stated so that is what we are proving, the permit. I guess the then that needs to come up.
And it could be something I said that.
I don't know. I'll take it out.
Alright, anything else on 388? Alright, on 389. Let's see, one, two, three, four, five, six, seven, eight, nine, one, ten. Basically, I said, so there's an engineering record, which he's sealed the front of these drawings, so that needs to be sealed.
Sealed.
Yeah, S E A L E D. Anything else on 389? Alright, how about page 390? I didn't find anything.
On the third line from the bottom. Town clerk offered, stated I was, I told her I would see if it was a feasible thought. Is that supposed to be thought?
Yeah, but I can change it to idea if you want, okay?
No, I mean, it's okay.
Yeah, whatever was on the record.
I just had, I know it sounds quirky, but it is what it says. Okay.
Alright, 391.
Okay, the one, two, three, four, fourth line down. Starting the line before that, then the storage building. So what is everyone's list, let's discuss? It seems like a word is left out or something, and then I couldn't figure out what that was.
Down the right side. So it's not next week or next year, but I ever stated, the way that ordinance says prior residence has to be built first in the storage building, so what is everyone's?
Sounds like you just like. Restarting the sentence there.
Let's discuss it and see what everybody's thoughts are.
Sounds like you just.
Yeah, she's restarted, yeah.
To clean it up, you could probably say, what's everyone's thoughts? Let's discuss it.
I said, what's everyone's thoughts are, let's discuss it, see what everybody?
Yeah, we said twice.
Yeah. I fixed it.
He very young. About 392.
If you look at the sentence on the bottom of 392 going over to 393. Jordan Jackson felt and stated right, it got to be existing.
Jordan Jackson stated so it's kind. I go to without saying, and many of the sentences, on page 68, 69, section 356. Josh Allen stated, "The hatch will not exceed the height of the existing building." Jordan Jackson stated, stated right, it's got to be existing. That is what they said.
Okay.
Because they were looking at the computer together.
Then I saw 392. The first paragraph on the next to the bottom line, where it says, "We don't want to get into that either." Josh Allen stated, "Sorry, I hope I didn't just..." The sentence unfinished. It's not long before Sarah just finished.
No, I don't think I finished that, I think I was.
You think you just stopped?
Yeah, I just stopped, and she was like, no worries.
I think you were implying that you were adding to the conversation and you're an alternate.
No, I was implying that, sorry if everyone else in the room knew this already, and I didn't.
Oh, okay, okay.
And she's like, no, it's okay, you can ask her.
Okay, I'll ask about you.
It's no problem.
Alright.
We could put Brent's Drift Salt into Deep Salt.
Alright, 394. I didn't see anything.
I do, it's supposed to be B O A instead of C O A. So I fixed that myself. Set at the paragraph, seven, where they own B and B O A. I put C instead of B. Just showed one nice spell change, it's not worth the flip.
No, you can have the wrong word, but not the spell right.
Well, when it's abbreviated, it's not gonna catch. Specific abbreviation. Anything else on 394? Alright. Alright, we're getting to, see, 395.
Yeah, yeah. Well, very much appreciate your thoroughness. I think we need to reconsider having the text from the modules as part of the meeting minutes. Would be 100% sure that's copyright protected. And taking a paid-for service and then putting it out as public minutes might be.
Gotcha.
Borderline. So, hold on. There's a few options, you could contact them and see if they care.
I'll just take them out.
Yeah, yeah.
I'll make it easy.
And make it easier on you.
You can just reference the title of what we.
Yeah.
I'll just take it out.
Just.
Just reference the one.
Thank you for doing it, I know that's a lot of work. Thank you for that, but. Another, as a follow-up, we might want to consider the YouTube video as well, because that would be a rebroadcast of a paid-for service.
I'll have to call on that one, I can't answer that one.
Yeah, I mean, maybe where we could just cut the YouTube video short.
Yeah.
But that may be something to, yeah.
I'll have to call, I'll call the school of government this week and find out.
Alright.
Or my other question on that, could we close the meeting? And then just have a training session that wouldn't have to be on YouTube? So just say, okay, now we're going.
You do have the open meetings laws, so. We have to look and see about the open meetings laws.
Like, the only way we could cut it off and not put those up there is if they tell me they have a problem, like Josh said, but copyrights there.
Yeah.
I mean, it may be something that can be edited out of the YouTube if it turns out.
Yeah.
That we don't need to have them, you know, broadcast because of the copyright.
Right. I don't know, I have to come see it, I'm not sure.
Let's see, and that brings us to.
Four, seven, down at the bottom.
Okay. I didn't see anything.
That one, I don't think it's into another one of those line of files.
Maybe the school of government will read our minutes, where you said, you said, "They're not as good as Dennis Patton."
They bones.
Oh, yeah.
24, 13 is the next page.
13.
Yes.
Alright. See down at the bottom.
Where it says, "I'd like to add what's here at the end."
Do we want to say, ETJ, "You in the room?" Do we want to say, "Josh in the room?" Because you say, "You don't know."
Yeah, let's put Josh there.
See that?
It's the fourth line down on 414.
Okay, yeah, that way, because I know what you meant, but then on the record.
He pointed to me.
Yeah.
I've got to make sure I prefer by name.
I usually substitute it if I catch it. Just like you knows, and uh-huh, I'll put it in there.
Thank you. I'll try to work on that.
Look down at the line, where it's about move a page, eight, kind of the lines. Where it says, "Come back on the 30th Tuesday night at 7:00 P.M."
On 7:30.
That looks good for everybody. Town clerk offered stated, in per se.
Come back on 30th Tuesday at 7:00 P.M. Is that one good for everybody?
Town clerk offered stated, in per S.
Per se, we get the ordinance just on the end.
What word would we put there?
I went back, see what was put, well, I see it exactly, but I think that's what I said, but anyway. Just kind of want to re-sliming together things. I think I meant to say, "Before the end of September."
What are you talking about now?
Alright, I don't, have I seen anything else? Alright. So with that review, so we'll be looking for a motion to prove those minutes with the corrections that we just discussed.
Oh, if you won't, I've been just getting ready for the next meeting. So they got to take out all that last stuff.
Okay, well, let's.
Do we need to table it?
We need to table it.
Okay.
Until next meeting.
Okay, alright, I moved the table, the minutes, so we get the corrections recorded, tableted our next regular meeting.
So we have a motion to table, the minutes until next meeting, do I have a second?
Second.
So we have a second. Any discuss, further discussion?
No.
No, no? Alright, if everybody's in agreement with that, I'd ask everybody by voting, by saying aye. Anyone opposed? Motion carries. Alright, it is time for our public comment. We do not have any guests, so we will move over to the correspondence part.
I just have one, I talked to Ms. Friar. I was gonna read y'all a letter, but I'm not going to, I'm just not gonna do it anymore. But I talked to Ms. Friar, she looked at the video. She called me and asked me for a copy of the town ordinance. She felt like her right-to-do process was violated. I told her y'all were going to rescind the motion. And so, that's kind of where we're at. I told her that I would deliver that message.
Alright. Which brings us to the new business. Let me pull up something. Got a lot of stuff here.
Are you gonna mention, or am I gonna put your letter in the, layer's letter in the?
Yeah, so.
Just for retrograde.
The letter that I emailed in response to the town council and to mayor and to all you guys. We'll have that put in the record. I'm not gonna read it, it's seven pages long. Which brings me to the new business. So, last week, or last meeting, as all you know, I was coming off of three days of being at hospital with tingers, so I was a little sleep deprived. And I was understanding that it was a permit. And so, I made a mistake in how I proceeded with the meeting, so. What we need to do is, we need to, I need to ask for, rescind the motion that I made last week. And then what will need to happen is, Mrs. Friar has the option to apply for a variance. In advance, then we'll go to Board of Adjustment meeting. We'll have a Board of Adjustment hearing, it'll be an evidentiary hearing. Then she will have to come in, she'll have to give, you know, evidentiary evidence of an unnecessary hardship. So, that's how that needs to proceed, so. So at this time, I would ask for anyone, if there'd be a motion to rescind the motion last week.
So moved.
So we have a motion to rescind the motion that I made last meeting where we denied the permit.
Do you want me to read the exact motion?
Yeah, that'd be fine.
Let's make sure we have it on record.
It's on page 393. Middle way down.
Okay, so the motion, we do not, let me, okay, hold on, I just want to read this. This is just discussion, I want to make sure I'm on the right spot, hang on just a second. So Brian's exact words was, "So I'll make a motion that we do not approve it and we hold to our ordinance." "I have a motion to not approve the ordinance for the accessory building, do I have a second?" So I would like to rescind this motion.
Alright, so we have a motion to rescind the motion from last meeting. Is there a second? So we have a second from Ima Winston. Any further discussion on that? There's no further discussion, so it is time I would ask for a vote on that to accept that rescinding the motion. All those in favor by saying aye.
Aye.
Anyone opposed? None opposed. Before, before we move into the planning and zoning module, I'd been a while, and I reached out to Josh today just to see if he had something ready on the road draft. It sounds like he's pretty close. And he said, he said that, he asked when our next meeting was, and I told him it was on the, the end of October, the 28th, I believe. And he's asked me how much time it would be, and I said, "Well, he'd at least have, have it in two weeks." Do you guys think two weeks would be enough to kind of start looking through it? I mean, obviously, I'm not talking about us going through it the first two weeks and then meeting, and then we're done with it, that's not what I'm talking about.
Just our initial questions.
Our initial questions, because he's, he's, he said that he is open that night and could be here. So do you think two weeks prior to that would be enough time to, um, give us time to look at sort of what's been proposed and, and come up with some questions?
What are the dates again?
October 28th would be our next meeting, so the 14th would be two weeks prior to that.
Okay.
So I guess, let's first decide, find out if everybody can be here October 28th. Now, that's, all hinges on if, if he actually will have everything done and to Sheila Fryer to give Sheila enough time to get it all together and get it to us. Because I, I mean, I know he's very busy, and I talked to him before, and, you know, things have got pushed out, so anything's possible, it could get pushed out again. But, do you think?
Yeah, I have a question, so, when we're reviewing this, are we looking, I believe you said last meeting, we're, we're going to get a marked-up copy. Right, so are we just reviewing what he's changing, and asking questions about what he's changing?
Any of it.
Or, or is it a broad level?
So he, he said that he has, the things he's changed, he's gone out in the margin and indicated that. So we should be able to look at what he's changing, what he's got noted, the reason why, and then we can also reference our current ordinance to see what we had, you know, and compare.
Okay. Yes, I can read it.
All right. So, we will plan on having the October 28th meeting, Tuesday, 17:00 P.M. If he's not available or it's not ready, then we can continue going through the e-moderals. All right. Um, so, tonight, we're going to start back going through, you know, get as far as we can on these, uh, e-moderals. Um, for like myself and Colleen and Iva and Jordan, you know, some of this is stuff that we already know, this is just a refresher for us. I know for Maroon and Josh, this is brand new, so, um, just wanted to mention that. Um, so, at this time, we will let Sheila get the third, we're starting on the third one, legal considerations for rezoning, for a rezoning.
When it comes to a rezoning, what should the Planning Board and Governing Board consider? And what should the Planning Board and Governing Board not consider? What are the things that absolutely should be part of the deliberation? And what are the things that are out of bounds? That's what we'll talk about in this session on legal considerations for a rezoning. I'm Adam Lovett with the School of Government, let's jump into it. It can be helpful to think about these topics with some context. So, let's imagine this rezoning case. The property owner, Apartment Developers LLC, is seeking to rezone the subject property. It's currently zoned for single-family, R1, and they're seeking a rezoning to multifamily. So as that's going to the Planning Board, as that's moving forward to the Town Council or the County Commission, what are the things that those boards should take into account? And what are the things that they should not consider in making that rezoning decision? We're going to talk about each of those, first, the legitimate zoning considerations, and second, the improper zoning considerations. The boards absolutely should consider the general land use impacts of this change. What will this mean for this particular owner or developer with regard to property values and property rights? What will it mean with regard to investment expectations and growth for our community? But also, considering the impacts for the neighbors, what will this change mean for safety and noise? What's it going to mean for impacts to the nearby properties with regard to traffic or stormwater? What does this change mean for those property values, for those investment expectations of the nearby property owners? The Planning Board and the Governing Board should think about the broader community. What will this mean for safety and convenience? What's this going to mean for traffic? To what extent does this particular use fit into this location, is it an appropriate use for this place? And what's the character of this particular community? What are the availability of different housing types and what are the property value implications for this development or another? And the boards should consider the impacts for the local government. What are going to be the infrastructure costs, both for installation of this capital investment, but also the long-term maintenance of these roads and pipes? What will be the service costs, and do we as a community have sufficient public services to provide safety for this community and this growth? What will be the tax implications and the property value implications? To what extent will this broaden and diversify our economy, to what extent will this provide for a mix of housing types? All of those considerations should be part of the decision-making. As the Planning Board and the Town Council or the County Commission is considering, is this rezoning in the public interest? Those boards can also consider the broad statutory purposes of development regulations and zoning. Those include the character of the district and its peculiar suitability for particular uses, a view to conserving the value of buildings, property values, and encouraging the most appropriate use of land, making sure that there's a place for everything and that it's in its appropriate place. The Planning Board is called to consider consistency with applicable plans. The statute requires. The Governing Board has to adopt a statement of plan consistency. And so there's a real and legally required expectation of considering the applicable plans. Important to remember, in North Carolina, local land use plans and comprehensive plans, they are not binding, and so, it's not driving the decision, but it should be a factor in the decision. As things flow from staff to the Planning Board and then to the Governing Board, the recommendations from the prior step should be part of the, of the factoring and considerations. And so, when this rezoning winds up before the Governing Board, absolutely, they, they should take into account, what does staff recommend, what does the staff analysis indicate for this project? What was the Planning Board recommendation, and what's their rationale for why this should be approved or denied? The Governing Board absolutely should consider those recommendations. To be clear, those are just recommendations, they are advisory, and the Governing Board is not bound by a staff recommendation, the Governing Board is not bound by a Planning Board recommendation. Occasionally, staff and Planning Board and Governing Board will see things differently. There may be other factors at play, once it gets to the political arena at the City Council or the County Commission. And so, they're not always going to align, there may be differences of opinion, that's fine, and it's part of the process. If you find that your community is frequently or always, uh, at odds, where the Planning Board is pointing one way and the Governing Board is pointing another way, that may be an indication that there's other issues at play and other issues we need to address. Maybe our plans are out of date and don't reflect our current priorities and our current politics. Maybe we need to update our plans so that our decisions are consistent with our plans. Or, maybe the Planning Board and staff has been tasked with the wrong questions and the wrong issues. They're not giving the right analysis for what the Governing Board is really looking at. And so if you find that your community is always at odds, the Planning Board going one way and the Governing Board going another way, might be time to revisit the plan or the technical analysis that the Planning Board and staff is providing. This is a technical but really important piece. If we're talking about a general rezoning, if we're talking about going from single-family residential to multifamily or commercial, if it's conventional zoning, regular old, traditional zoning, from one district to the other district, once that rezoning is approved, the property owner has all the rights and obligations of that new zoning district. And so, the property owner may say, "Oh yeah, I'm going to develop apartments." But once it's rezoned, they can develop whatever's allowed under that new zoning district, as long as they meet the requirements. And so, as there is a proposed rezoning, the Planning Board and the Governing Board certainly should consider all the uses that are allowed in that new zoning district. Not just the one that the developer is proposing, but in general, what uses would be allowed at this site if we rezoned it. Depending on what the zoning category is, there may be a whole range of different land uses that would now be allowed on that site. We need to take into account all of those options, we need to consider all the possible uses that might be on that site. So thinking about that particular scenario, thinking about the Apartment Developers LLC, as that pri- as that rezoning goes through the process, the boards and the elected officials certainly should be considering the benefits and detriments to the owner, to the neighbors, and to the broader community. They should be reviewing the plans that apply to this site and how this action is consistent or not consistent with those plans. They should take into account the recommendations from the staff and from the Planning Board, certainly not bound by those, but using those to inform the decision-making process. If it's a conventional, regular rezoning, then Governing Board needs to consider all the uses that might be allowed under that new rezoning. So, sure, they said apartments, but what else could be allowed here, what other things might this open up and allow? Because the market might change, the economy might change, they might choose to go a different direction. And broadly, what's in the public interest? Our decision-makers at the end of the day, our Town Council and our County Commission, they are voted in, they are elected to make the tough calls, to think about the broad community and the needs of this broad community. What's in the broad public interest? Does it make sense to allow this rezoning or to deny this rezoning? Those all should be, indeed must be, factors in the rezoning, um, consideration. Those are all legitimate zoning considerations. Now let's switch gears. I want to highlight some of the topics that are out of bounds, some of the ways that our statutes and our courts have limited what should be considered for a rezoning decision. One of the things that's out of bounds is the ownership structure, whether something is owner occupied or tenant occupied. Whether this is going to be a tenant occupied apartment or a, an owner occupied condo, local land use regulations can't regulate that, and it shouldn't be part of the decision-making. The land use regulations can regulate multifamily development, can regulate the size of the buildings, the parking that goes with it, the landscaping that might be necessary, the density, the number of units. The local land regulations can absolutely regulate those things. But what our courts have said is, local land use regulations cannot regulate whether it's going to be owner occupied or tenant occupied. So we don't need to be concerned with whether, whether it's, this new development is going to be apartments or condos, whether this new subdivision is going to be owner occupied or renter occupied. Local land use restrictions are not authorized to regulate that kind of ownership structure. Another topic that's out of bounds is the identity of the applicant, the owner, or the future tenants of this particular site. Now, this can play out in lots of different ways. One of those ways is thinking about the developer who we see before us. Developers proposing this multifamily development, and maybe this is a known developer, a trusted, uh, member of the community. We've seen them do good projects on the other side of town, we know that they can do good work here, so we want to approve the rezoning for this developer. But, the rezoning is not for this one individual. The rezoning is for the property. And this current developer may be planning to sell this property tomorrow. This current property owner may have a contract already signed, they're ready to close once the rezoning happens. When we're making a rezoning decision, it's not for a particular individual, it's for the property. And so, whether it's our favorite developer in town, whether it's a scoundrel that we don't trust at all, that's not part of the decision-making, because at the end of the day, this is a land use decision, not an individual permit. The rezoning will run with the land, it will go to the next property owner. Another way that this can play out is with regard to discriminatory and illegitimate considerations about who's there now or who's going to be there. Public decisions about land use cannot be based on the race or religion, the ethnicity of current occupants, future tenants. And from time to time, in public hearings, folks will talk about those people, we don't want their kind in our neighborhood. Those are inappropriate, they cannot be part of the decision-making process, and they may wind up being an invitation to the federal district courthouse if we're not careful. Chairs of boards should be ready and equipped for if those conversations pop up, to redirect, to make clear that the board cannot base its decision on those considerations. If the member of the public has good information to provide about the land use impacts of this project, certainly we want to hear that, but we can't base our decision on illegitimate things such as discriminatory bases. These cartoons are meaningless, they are arbitrary, they are nothing. And the reason they're here is because from time to time, land use decisions seem to be arbitrary. From time to time, there's just no rationale for why that decision was made. And what our courts get nervous about is, if there's no real good reason, if there's no basic justification or rationale for why this rezoning was approved or denied, they get nervous that maybe it was one of these reasons, good or bad. If there's no land use rationale for why something was approved or denied, our courts get nervous that maybe there's something underlying the decision-making that didn't come to the surface. It's not being stated why this decision was actually made. And so our, our courts will look carefully and may overturn a decision if there's just no good rationale. So, if there's a lack of land use rationale, that can mean trouble for our decision-making. To be clear, there's a thousand reasons to rezone a property or to not rezone a property. There's all kinds of public interest considerations, good legitimate considerations about what this will mean for the property owner, what it'll mean for the neighborhood, what it'll mean for us broadly as public. There's lots of good reasons and rationale for why a decision is made. We need to be clear and state those, and not leave question as to what might be underlying or what might be covered up. Another topic that ought not be considered in the decision-making, except in limited circumstances, are promises and conditions offered up by the applicant, by the developer. If this is a regular, conventional zoning, from one zoning district to the next, once it's rezoned, that property owner has all the rights and obligations of that new zoning district. If at the hearing, the applicant said, "Oh, I've got these-" If at the hearing, the applicant said, oh, I've got these designs, I've got these site plans, I've got these color swatches, I promise to do everything according to all these things I'm showing you. There's no guarantee to that. Those promises, those kind of conditions that are offered up in the hearing, if it's just regular rezoning, there's no enforcement for that down the road because that's not part of the zoning. Once it's rezoned, that owner has all the rights and obligations what the zoning ordinance says. The big exception to this is if it's conditional zoning. If it is very clearly and explicitly conditional zoning that allows for conditions to be added and promises to be made and incorporated into the zoning and enforced as zoning. So we need to be real clear, as we're making a rezoning, is this regular, conventional rezoning or is this conditional zoning where we can attach those conditions? This list is not so much things that are out of bounds as it is specific land uses that have some guardrails, specific land uses that have some special legal protection from federal statute or state statute or from our courts. I'm not giving this list to pretend that we're digging deeply into all the details of these, but rather just to have them, build some awareness of these topics. So that next time one of these comes across your desk, your antenna goes up a little bit and you think, oh, I think we need to be careful with these. Religious land uses need to be treated the same as a similarly situated secular land use. So if you allow theaters, large gathering places in downtown, you should also allow religious land uses in downtown. Just because something is religious doesn't give it a free pass. It's still subject to the regulations. But also, just because it's religious, it can't have extra regulations and extra limitations in place. Signs like billboards or the little temporary signs out front, those are speech and they have some protection as speech. But you can still have basic regulations of the characteristics of signs. So the size of signs, how brightly they're lit, where they're located, and how many signs there are, you can have those basic content-neutral regulations. But once we start regulating what's on the sign, that wanders into content regulation, courts look very closely at that and typically don't like it. Manufactured homes, adult businesses, and cell towers, those all have to be allowed somewhere within the jurisdiction, but there can be general regulations in place for each of those. They each have specific provisions, but they have to be allowed somewhere within the jurisdiction. Family care homes are residential settings where up to six individuals with disabilities live and have care in a residential setting. These have to be allowed, the same as a house would be allowed, and so they can't have extra permitting and extra requirements in place. With regard to the State Fair Housing Act, there is a limit and requirement that zoning decisions cannot be made based on the fact that a project includes affordable housing. A local community cannot deny a rezoning application or permit because it includes affordable housing. Now, I know for many communities, the opposite is the concern. For many communities, they're not turning down projects because of having housing. They're looking for projects that have housing. Affordable housing winds up being a tricky legal topic in North Carolina when it comes to land use regulation. There is not explicit authority for requiring affordable housing within a new residential development. Other states have clear authority for that or clear prohibitions. North Carolina is a bit in a gray area. Not having explicit authority, it would seem that there can't be a kind of baseline requirement that all new residential development must include affordable housing. It's called inclusionary zoning, other states allow it or prohibit it. North Carolina doesn't have clear authority for that. That said, conditional zoning is a very flexible tool and some communities do use conditional zoning and include affordable housing through conditional zoning approvals. Bonafide farm activities, if you're working in the county or in the ETJ area of a municipality, farm activities cannot be subject to local zoning. The county can't tell a farmer when to plow or give a setback on grazing cattle. That's pretty straightforward and easy. What gets more challenging is the broad range of activities that are incidental and related to agriculture and the broad range of activities that fall under the category of agritourism. That has been a widening scope of land uses over recent years and continues to raise questions for many communities. This is not the full list, there's lots of other land uses that have special protections, but this gives you a sense and a flavor of some of the topics that have to have special consideration in zoning decision-making. With that, we have covered some of the legitimate zoning considerations, the things that the planning board and the governing board absolutely should consider as they're making a rezoning or other legislative development decision, but also those things that are out of bounds, the things that we need to be careful of and avoid as we are making public decisions about how property owners are going to use their property. Some of the things are just not part of the public decision-making process. As you move forward in making your legislative decisions in your communities, keep these in mind, focus on those appropriate and legitimate considerations, steer clear of those improper, disreconciled considerations.
Sheila, if you back up one, we missed types of land use decisions.
Oh, okay.
Yeah. Well, you can go ahead and ask it now.
Okay, I'm asking a question, Sheila. So in the last meeting we had, in one of the modules, if y'all remember, there was a chart, it was like a quick chart that said the roles of each, like what the staff could do, what the board could do, and I don't remember exactly, but basically the staff, I want to make sure I understand it so we don't have to go through what we did at this past meeting and have to rescind or get off track. My understanding is the staff, which would be Sheila, the staff, when a request is made, the staff can reference the ordinance and give the public an answer and give the public their option if they want to ask for a variance when they come in. Because under the staff zone was anything that's already in place, like an ordinance.
Yes.
Is that my understanding of that right?
Yeah, the zoning administrator would administrate that. Then whatever the person decides, like a variance or special use, then it would come to us.
But Sheila has the authority when they come in this office and ask about something. At that point, she can say, the ordinance says this. If you would like to apply for a variance, this is how you do it? Is that what we're supposed to do? Okay. Because I know that people come in and ask different things and then Sheila says she'll ask us, but she could go ahead and we could skip a step.
Right.
She could go ahead and say, this is what the ordinance says, these are her options. And then if they choose to apply for a variance, then she brings it to us. Am I understanding that right?
Correct, and then we would have a board of adjustment meeting. And there's, yeah, there's, because it's a hearing, there's a time period.
Okay.
It's an evidentiary hearing. And whoever the applicant is, you know, has got to present evidence as to why they're, you know, why the ordinance is creating an unnecessary hardship for them.
Okay, I was going back, I went back and looked at that chart and it kind of alluded to the staff, you know, zoning administrator or clerk or whatever, could, you know, give the public the answer that's already published because the ordinance is public, but then if they want to apply. The other thing, you know, different people have different styles. So staff we've had in the past versus staff we have now have different styles. So I just want to make sure I understand because in the past, really, the only time I remember getting something was if it was a variance or a permit. And when we just got asked like an unofficial way, I guess that got into a gray area.
So like...
Okay, okay, all right. So that was on, I went back and looked at the charts. I want to make sure I understood how it goes.
Okay. And I would just say this, yes, that is what I should have did. But I had already let her have the permit for the first one. And I knew how y'all felt about it. And so I knew the chances of me telling that woman to pay $200, to come before y'all to ask for that store's building, I knew what her answer was going to be. Basically, before I ever asked her.
Before we go down to Rabbit Hole.
I'm not going down to Rabbit Hole, I'm stopping right here. And I'm going to refer back, because it's the last time I'm ever doing it, but I will refer back. When the cog ones came in here and asked me about getting a permit to put a single white on their lot over on Oak County Home Road, I did not realize the lot had been moved. Okay, I give it that, I didn't know. All right, well, I believe there were several parties, myself included, who made a mistake of talking to them outside of the meeting when they were not supposed to, which was illegal in essence. And so they never came in here and paid their $200 to have their special use permit because she'd already told me they couldn't afford the double white, which I told y'all, and y'all went and told me, you just need to buy a double white and then you get around a special use permit and you won't have to pay $200. I did basically the same thing for Miss Fryer the second time. And I'm dropping it right there, we've all made mistakes. Lord knows I have made mistakes, I've learned, I have learned, it will not happen again. I promise you. We have all made mistakes, I admitted my mistakes, Brian has admitted his mistakes. If I've made one, God knows that I am not perfect, never going to be perfect. But you won't see a permit or anything else, unless you absolutely have to. And they'll pay their $200. And anybody that does anything illegal outside of now on, including myself, is going to have to take rap for it because I'm not illegal anymore.
All right, let's get back on task here, if you would, start playing the 12th.
The local, the local.
Type, no, type of land use decisions.
Is what, we just watched?
No, we skipped down to legal procedures for rezoning, I missed one.
I thought we watched that one.
We watched the first two last time and I told you, I told you to...
Hi, I'm Jim Joyce, a faculty member with the UNC School of Government. And now we're going to talk about the types of land use decisions. Whenever local governments make decisions about proposed land uses and proposed land use projects, they will make one of three types of decisions to decide whether to approve the project or not. These decisions are either administrative, quasi-judicial, or legislative. Talk about each of those in a little more detail. Let's imagine that we've got a parcel of undeveloped property. All right, it's off a main road and it's zoned for residential use. There may be a proposal to build some single-family homes on that lot. There may be a proposal for a multifamily development. And you may have a proposal for even a shopping center. Each of these ideas, at least in our sample zoning district, have different processes that they follow, there are different kinds of decisions. First, we've got a residential zoning district and a single-family development. Often, those are allowed, what we call "by right." What that means is that in order to proceed to putting in houses and subdividing lots, all that the builder or developer needs to do is go to staff for a zoning permit. That zoning permit is a relatively straightforward decision. It follows clear, objective standards with very little discretion. The planner will look at the ordinance and look at the plan and decide, does this proposal meet the standards that we have in our ordinance? Or does it meet our setback requirements? Is this use allowed in this district, et cetera? And then they'll issue the zoning permit. So these administrative decisions, usually made by staff, and these are kind of the day-to-day decisions about land uses and new development. These typically don't come with the hearing, it's, the criteria that are being applied are usually fairly straightforward, either I like to think of them as measurable or check-the-box criteria, right? I'm able to look at a plan and see whether we meet the setbacks and what the proposed use is. There's not a whole lot of wrestling with the facts or the standards. So those are administrative decisions, day-to-day, little to no public input in their applying standards that are pretty straightforward. Quasi-judicial decisions are going to be a little different. So let's say in this residential zoning district that a multifamily development would require a special use permit. It's a special use. That special use permit is issued after a quasi-judicial process. In a quasi-judicial process, we're still applying standards and we're still applying standards usually from your local ordinances, but those standards tend to require a little more discretion. For instance, a special use permit might require a showing that the proposed use be in harmony with the surrounding area or not substantially injure the value of surrounding property. These are not the kind of criteria that we can just look up on a map and kind of check the box. Quasi-judicial, the standards that lead us to a quasi-judicial process are ones where we really need to kind of dig into the facts and use a little judgment to see how the facts apply to a specific project. And so it takes a little more to determine whether the standards are being met or not. In order to do this, we have a formal evidentiary hearing. Notice is provided to the applicant, property owner, and other nearby landowners. And instead of staff, a board is making the decision after we have a formal evidentiary hearing. That hearing is a little bit like a court hearing. We're going to swear in witnesses, where there's the possibility that someone might make a legal objection. And our decision has to be made on the basis of the legal standards that are in the ordinance or in the state law, depending on which decision we're making, and on the evidence that comes into the record. So the evidentiary hearing is before the public, so it's a much more public process than most administrative decisions. But that input is generally limited to providing factual information. And so there's not the same breadth of decision-making discretion that we'll see in the legislative type. Quasi-judicial decisions, as you can see, include variances, special use permits, appeals of administrative decisions. You might have a notice of violation that's issued by a staff member or an interpretation of the ordinance. If someone doesn't like those and they want to appeal, that appeal goes to the board of adjustment in a quasi-judicial format. Our last kind of decision is even more broad and open than the quasi-judicial process. Let's say we have a residential zoning district and a proposed commercial use, something like a strip center. Now, maybe that strip center is not allowed in the residential zoning district. If that's the case, then there needs to be, if the project is going to go forward, then there would need to be a rezoning of that property to a new zoning district. there would need to be a rezoning of that property to a new zoning district. Rezoning property is a legislative decision. I'll say that your zoning ordinance is made up of two parts, there's the text and the map. So the map is part of the ordinance, that GIS layer that sits on your county website. That is, oftentimes, that's the zoning map. And so when we're going to change from, say, residential to commercial, highway business, whatever, that's a legislative decision. Any of our text amendments to zoning, subdivision, or other ordinances are also legislative decisions. These are the decisions where we're setting the rules, right? We're making broad policy decisions. What should the rules be? Should we allow shopping centers in this particular area? And the process for those generally involves a review by your planning board, and then the final decision is made by the governing board, the town council, the Board of County Commissioners, and so on. And that, as I mentioned, the scope of potential bases for making that decision are very broad. We'll have a public hearing where people can get up and say pretty much what they want, and pretty much any kind of governmental and land use-related rationale will support a legislative decision. That includes, again, text amendments, rezonings, even conditional rezonings, or rezoning to conditional zoning districts, though that's still a legislative decision like other zoning changes. So just kind of a quick rundown, and then we'll wrap up for this module. Administrative decisions are the ones where we're applying those objective standards, those are the day-to-day decisions, like notices of violation or zoning permits. There's generally no hearing, and they're generally taken care of by staff, with some exceptions. Quasi-judicial decisions, still based on standards that are usually in the ordinance, but those standards require us to really look at the evidence and the facts of a particular situation in order to make our decision. Decisions like a variance or a special use permit. Hearing is evidentiary, so it is a hearing and the public is invited, but we're gathering evidence. And those are typically led by and made by an appointed board, like your Board of Adjustment or some, in some communities, the governing board or the planning board might function as the Board of Adjustment. But that's, but they're the ones making that quasi-judicial decision. And finally, when we're setting what the standards are, we're making the rules, that's the legislative decision, rezonings, text amendments, and those have a legislative hearing, much broader participation, and the governing board that can make their decision based on a much broader set of potential reasonings or reasons. So that's all for the types of land use decisions. Thank you for watching. So now we're out of the module part, and we're back to the you-and-me-talking. I see the question from Jennifer about these slides being slightly different than what's in the chat. We can certainly give you those updated slides, I don't know that Shannon has those yet. Only to give those to her, the substance of the slides is pretty much the same, there are just a couple of, a couple of these kind of structural, separating the pieces, kind of slides that are in there. I wanted to drill down a little more on the most common kinds of quasi-judicial decision for purposes of our discussion here. You have variances, right, where we're going to give someone a little bit of leeway, we're gonna vary from our usual strict application of our rules. The standards for those are actually set by state law, those are in the statutes. Whereas the criteria for these other decisions tends to be found in your ordinances, right? Special use permits, it may be by use, it may be one general set that apply, of criteria that applies to all special uses. Those appeals of administrative decisions, and then your historic preservation commissioner board will review their certificates of appropriateness through a quasi-judicial process, because they have their standards, and those standards are often gonna be a little more involved to apply. All right.
So that's the end of it. Did we just do?
I want a question.
Yes.
So the quasi, I got that legislative.
That is the.
Could that be?
Town?
Town council.
Town council.
No minor town council.
Yes, ma'am.
All right. That's what I was thinking, I want to make sure.
Didn't we just do legal considerations for rezoning, the first one?
Basic, local, maybe the legal procedures, didn't we? Back to the other one, I believe.
Did we do legal considerations first when we started tonight? I can't remember.
Legal.
I think we need to go to the legal considerations for a rezoning.
Do we do legal procedures or?
I don't think we've done legal procedures, click on that one, see. We'll do that one, and then we'll call it a night, because it's 8:15. This is about 30 minutes.
So suppose there is a proposal for a rezoning on the edge of town. How's that gonna go? What's that process going to be? What notice do we have to provide? What kind of hearings are we gonna hold in order to make that decision? That's what we're gonna talk about in this session, the legal procedures for a rezoning or for other legislative development decisions. I'm Adam Lovelady with the UNC School of Government. Let's jump in and talk about the legal procedures for rezonings. For this session, we're gonna talk about these topics. First, just setting up the legal framework for the decision-making and the roles of a public board. Talk about the application itself and the staff review, the role of that staff review. Talk a bit about the planning board review and comment that's required by statute, and then finally, the governing board decision, the legal procedures that go with that. Note that in another session, we will talk about the considerations, the things that we, the substantive considerations that we'll take into account when we're making these legislative decisions. This session is specifically focused on the procedures. Now thinking about that legal framework, I want to emphasize and kind of set up how this is operating and how your local government might fit in. One thing that has to be noted is, in North Carolina, local governments can do what the General Assembly has said they can do. The North Carolina General Assembly has delegated a lot of different responsibilities to counties and to municipalities in the state, but there are certain rules and requirements for that delegated authority. When we talk about planning and zoning, the rules and requirements are in Chapter 160D of the general statutes. Chapter 160D is the statutory chapter that outlines the authority, the roles and responsibilities for planning, zoning, subdivision, minimum housing, building code enforcement, and a whole range of development regulations. When we're talking about the procedures, when we're considering, can a local government do this or that with regard to development regulations, commonly, the question is, well, what does Chapter 160D say? In general, especially when it comes to the procedures, Chapter 160D sets a framework, and local governments have to follow that framework. But there's room within that framework for organizing things slightly differently, for running the process a little bit differently. And so as I'm talking about these general requirements, I'm talking about the general framework, your community may approach things slightly differently, as long as it's within that legal framework. Now, if I'm saying something and it seems wildly out of kilter with the way that your community is processing a legislative decision such as a rezoning, then either you might need to update your processes to align with state law, or your local government may have special rules, may have local legislation or special charter provisions that allow for your local government to do things in a particular way. Some of the general rules are going to apply no matter what, and one of those general rules is with regard to open meetings. Important to recognize what counts as an open meeting, because if it's an open meeting, if it's an official meeting, then we gotta provide notice in advance, and we're gonna need minutes of the meeting, and we've got to invite the public to show up. So if something is an official meeting, then we have to follow all the rules and procedures. And here's the deal, the definition of official meeting is broader than you might think, and so a conversation at the grocery store or at the bar on Friday night could actually turn into an official meeting if we're not careful. So let's dig in to figure out what counts as an official meeting. Here is the statutory definition, so let's get familiar with this. An official meeting is a meeting, assembly, or gathering together at any time or place or the simultaneous communication by conference telephone or other electronic means of a majority of the members of a public body for the purpose of conducting hearings, participating in deliberations, or voting upon or otherwise transacting the public business within the jurisdiction, real or apparent, of the public body. So let's break that apart. If a majority of your board is gathered together electronically or in person to do something related to your public work, deliberate, vote, transact the public business, that's an official meeting. It would have to have notice, the public would have to be invited, the, there's gotta be minutes, all the requirements kick in. So you happen to be at a restaurant on Friday night, you bump into other members of your board, planning board is a public body, the governing board is a public body. If you've got a majority of your board there together, you start chatting about that agenda item for next Tuesday's meeting, deciding, how do we feel about this proposal, do we like this rezoning or not? We've now got a majority of the board gathered in person, transacting the public business. Can't do it. Now, to be clear, that doesn't mean you have to stay home all the time, it doesn't mean that you can't go to dinner on Friday night. You can go to dinner, you can bump into your fellow board members, you need to not then start talking about the meeting for next week. Note here that it's not limited to meeting in person, it would also apply for conference telephone or other electronic means. So if we've got simultaneous communication among a majority of the board, we're deliberating about a case, we're talking about an agenda item for next week, we've just now tripped over into official meeting land, we need to avoid that. Another general rule that's going to apply, another big piece of this legal framework, is with regard to public records. This is another one that's got a broad expansive definition and has legal implications for us as public officials. If we've got a public record and it is requested, we have to disclose and turn over that public record. So we need to be mindful about how we're creating public records, where we're creating public records, and what requirements that might then trigger. Another long and expansive definition here, public records are all documents, papers, letters, maps, books, photographs, films, sound recordings, magnetic or other tapes, electronic data processing records, artifacts, or other documentary material, regardless of physical form or characteristics, made or received in connection with the transaction of public business. That's a lot of stuff. And the language is somewhat old when we see film, sound recordings, and magnetic or other tapes, but we've got that catch-all, other documentary material. That email that you receive from an upset constituent about that rezoning case that's coming up. That text message that you sent to your buddy about your feelings about this upcoming zoning case, or you sent to a fellow board member. Those are now records in connection with the transaction of public business. Those could be disclosed if they are requested by the local paper, by some concerned citizens, or otherwise. It does not matter if it's a physical piece of paper or it's an electronic record, it's still a record. Doesn't matter if it's on your personal email or on your government email, still a public record if it's concerning the public business. And so it's not a, it doesn't shield from disclosure if it's on your personal computer, your personal device, or your personal email account. Now, both of these things can feel a little squishy, that my conversation at the restaurant on Friday night might trip into some public meeting that we now need to have notice for. It can feel a little odd that my personal email might be subject to disclosure and put on the front page of the paper. And from the personal perspective, that is true, but I'd encourage our public officials to step out of their current public official status and step into their status as the public, as citizen. These rules are in place to ensure that we as public get to see the decision-making process. These rules are in place so that we as public have access to our public records to make sure that decisions are made for the right reasons, that deliberation is robust and in the open, that there's not backroom deals or kind of underlying reasons for decision-making. We as public put these requirements for public records and open meetings, we put these into place so that we as public are there to view the decision-making, that we have access to our public records. And so yes, for the public official, it can feel a little bit strange that personal email might have to be disclosed. It can feel strange that your conversations, if we're not careful, could trip over into an official meeting. But for us as community, for us as public, these are important protections for open government and for getting some daylight into this decision-making process. Couple of things to note and keep in mind, some communities have, give their public officials a public email account in order to, so that the communications can be managed that way through that public email account rather than through personal email accounts. That's then easier to maintain and manage those record retainment requirements, and it allows for some separation between the personal and the official work. Also worth noting that the public records requirement does not mean that you have to create a public record, so a conversation between me and one other person is not creating a record, it's just a conversation. And if there's a request for the details of that conversation, that does not mean I have to come up with a record, there's not a record in existence of that. These are important rules for open government and rules we need to be aware of as we are acting as public officials. Another important legal framework consideration for planning board members as well as governing board members are the requirements and limitations with regard to conflicts of interest for legislative zoning matters. Members of appointed boards or governing boards shall not vote where the outcome of the matter being considered is reasonably likely to have a direct, substantial, and readily identifiable financial impact on the member. So if it is your property that's getting rezoned, you as planning board member cannot participate in that decision-making. If it is your business who's seeking the text amendment or seeking the rezoning, then you as city council member can't be part of the decision-making for that. Now note on the financial piece, it's direct, substantial, and readily identifiable. And so if there's a scenario where perhaps a public official, the board member owns a miniscule share of a stock through their retirement account, and now that company is seeking a rezoning, that's not necessarily gonna rise to the level of being in conflict of interest, but if there is direct, substantial, and readily identifiable financial impact, that could trigger this financial conflict of interest. that could trigger this financial conflict of interest. Important point here is that the conflict of interest standard is broader than just financial relationship and financial interest. With Chapter 160D, there's an expansion of the conflict of interest standard to also apply to close relationships. An appointed board member or a governing board member shall not vote on any zoning amendment if the landowner of the property is subject to a rezoning petition or the applicant for a text amendment is a person with whom the board member has a close familial, business, or other associational relationship. So if a planning board member, sitting on the planning board, and it's their child who's seeking the rezoning, that planning board member has a close familial relationship with the applicant, that planning board member would need to recuse themselves. If a governing board member is a business partner with the person seeking the rezoning, that's a close business relationship. That governing board member would need to recuse him or herself. Now, there can be situations where it's a close call. There can be questions about conflicts of interest. It's best to address those ahead of time for board members to identify a potential conflict and have a discussion with the local government attorney in advance to evaluate whether this rises to the level of a conflict or perhaps it's just an apparent conflict. Even apparent conflicts can be identified in the hearing so that everyone knows that there's that potential. If there is a complaint, if there is a challenge to say a particular board member should not participate, if there's an objection to their participation, then the remaining members of the board vote as to whether that member should participate or that member should be recused. That gives us some of the legal framework with regard to open meetings, public records, conflicts of interest. Now let's talk about the details of the process for a legislative development decision such as a rezoning. When it comes to a rezoning, there's various parties who could request a rezoning. Certainly, the local government can initiate a rezoning. The local government could redo the whole zoning map if it wants to, and it's got pretty broad discretion to do that. It'd have to follow the right processes, but it can make that request on its own. The governing board may instruct the planning department to bring forth an updated zoning map. Separate from the local government driving these decisions, there is certainly the option for a property owner to petition for a rezoning. This is the most common way that these processes move forward, where a particular owner or someone with an ownership interest in a property fills out the application to seek a rezoning. And certainly, there are rights to do this, to request a change to the rules, to petition our government to make change and give redress. And so certainly, there's the option for the property owner to do that. They don't have a right to the rezoning. It remains in the discretion of the local government to decide whether to rezone or not. But there's an option for the property owner or someone with an ownership interest to request, to petition that rezoning. When it comes to rezonings, we have to be particular about the extent to which third parties may request that. And here's the way this plays out. I, as property owner, could request for my property to be upzoned, to have zoning with more development rights and more density. I, as property owner, could request for my property to be downzoned. Maybe I think this shouldn't be commercial. Let's take it back to agricultural. My neighbor could not request to downzone my property. Under North Carolina state law, there are no third-party downzonings. And so if my neighbor is trying to reduce my property rights, is trying to take my property from commercial to agricultural, so there would be fewer uses allowed and less density, that would go against state law. They couldn't have that third-party downzoning. As we think about the internal staff process and the planning department review of an application for rezoning or text amendment, there could be several steps in the process. Depending on the size of the project or proposal, commonly, there will be some pre-application discussions or meetings, a chance for the applicant to sit down with planning staff and talk through the project and get some input and guidance on how that project might best move forward. This is not required necessarily, but it is an option that's available for smoothing the process as it moves forward. But there will need to be a formal application for the rezoning or for the other legislative change. In the best circumstances, we as local... As the community, we as local government, are going to have a really good application form that will seek all the information we need in order to make this decision. Certainly, there's still going to be other input. There's still going to be some back and forth. But we want a good form application that's going to solicit all the information that we will need. Sometimes, that application and analysis will include things like a transportation impact study or other technical analysis that may be necessary for evaluating this rezoning. Other times, it may be more simplified and more straightforward. When it comes to applications, we can charge a reasonable application fee, a permit fee. But that fee is not a revenue generation scheme. That application fee is not to pay for other things elsewhere in the local government. Application fees need to be reasonably related to the cost of processing this application, the copies we need to make, the staff time it's going to require, the overhead expenses of the office and of the boards, the board time that will be required for this. But we're not going to take... That fee cannot then be transitioned over for unrelated activities. Those fees need to stay with the department and pay for the processes and work of the department. Once the application is in, staff is going to perform technical analysis and provide some staff review. This allows for some expert review of how this project would play out, how it aligns with the comprehensive plans and other applicable plans. And local governments can tailor what that staff review is going to incorporate, how it's going to move forward. After that application and staff review stage, there's a requirement for the planning board to give review and comment on a proposed legislative change such as a rezoning. Chapter 160D, Section 604 outlines these requirements that all proposed amendments to the zoning regulation or zoning map shall be submitted to the planning board for review and comment. And the planning board is going to review and comment on whether the proposed action is consistent with any comprehensive plan and any other officially adopted plan that is applicable. The planning board gives written recommendation to the governing board that addresses plan consistency and other matters as deemed appropriate by the planning board. So before this rezoning can go to the governing board, it's got to go to the planning board. The planning board is going to give recommendation focused on plan consistency, but then other matters that the planning board deems necessary and appropriate for the decision-making for this rezoning or other zoning amendment. With regard to the process here, the planning board is going to get at least 30 days from the referral to the planning board. After that 30 days is up, if the planning board has not provided written recommendation, then the governing board can move forward even without that recommendation. I want to be clear about this procedural step. The governing board, the town council or the county commission, can give the planning board longer. There's not a requirement that the governing board take it up after 30 days. The governing board can give more time to the planning board. But the planning board can't just sit on an application and kind of have a veto and prevent it from going ahead to the governing board. After that 30 days has elapsed, the governing board can take it up even without that recommendation from the board, from the planning board. When the planning board is discussing and deliberating and providing their recommendation, they're holding a public meeting, an official meeting, and it has to be properly noticed. It might be handled as a legislative hearing, but that's not required by state law. Many communities do treat the planning board level similar to the governing board level, where there's going to be notice ahead of time and then invite the public to come and give input on this decision. There's the option to have a legislative hearing open to all and with input from all. But at the planning board level, that's not required. Note, that legislative decision... That legislative hearing is required for the governing board. We'll get to that in just a moment. So let's jump then to that governing board decision and the procedures that go with it. First off, once we get to the governing board decision, there's going to be required notice. State law requires that for any legislative hearing, so for an amendment to the zoning ordinance, for rezoning, for conditional zoning, that notice has to be published in the newspaper two times. One of those legal ads is going to be in that window of time that's 10, 25 days before the hearing. The other legal ad has to be in a separate calendar week. For every legislative hearing, for every legislative decision, development decision, we've got to have this newspaper notice. If it's a rezoning, if we're amending the zoning map, then there's also got to be some additional notice, a sign posted on the site. You can see an example here from Charlotte. A sign that's going to let passersby know that there's an upcoming hearing related to this property and let passersby know where they can get additional information. Also, to go along with the sign that's posted, there's got to be mailed notice to the affected parties, the property owner and the applicant, as well as the owners of adjoining and abutting property. Now, that's going to be mailed notice to those immediate neighbors or owners of the immediate neighboring properties. That's the minimum. Some local governments decide, well, we don't want to just give the minimum notice. We're going to mail notice to everyone within 500 feet or everyone within 5,000... Excuse me, 1,000 feet. It's an option for the local government to go beyond and provide additional notice by mail. But for a rezoning, we have to have the sign posted and mailed notice to adjoining property owners. In some cases, for a really big rezoning, that might mean mailing to a lot of property owners. In those cases where there's a large-scale rezoning, there is an option to do a half-page newspaper ad in place of the mailed notice, which can be cheaper and easier than providing mailed notice to hundreds of property owners. Next up, the hearing itself. This is at the governing board, so town council or the county commission. These are the legislators who are making this decision. They're going to hold a legislative hearing. There can be some reasonable rules put into place for this legislative hearing. But we're not going to follow the same formality that we would follow for a quasi judicial decision such as a variance or a special use permit. For these legislative hearings, we might have some reasonable rules like setting time limits on speakers and allowing each person three minutes. We might put into place a requirement for some signup sheets so that we can kind of keep the... Keep things moving and keep things in order. We might set rules about overall time limits to have some amount of time for folks in favor of the rezoning and some amount of time for folks opposing the rezoning. Certainly, we're going to need to maintain fundamental fairness and ensure that the public is able to engage in this process. But we don't have to follow those extra technical legal procedures of a quasi judicial evidentiary hearing the way that we would if this was another type of decision. If it's getting late, the hearing is dragging on, we might decide we want to continue this hearing. If we had announced at this particular meeting, we're going to continue this legislative hearing to our regularly scheduled meeting next month, then we don't have to do additional notice. We've provided the notice right here in the hearing. So interested parties are aware and know when to show up to engage in the next step. But if it's getting late and we say, you know what, let's just table this, we'll come back to it. We don't specify a date and time for that before bringing it back up, then we're going to have to provide additional notice in advance of that additional legislative hearing. There are some required statements that the governing board is going to have to adopt as they are adopting a rezoning or a text amendment. Whether they're approving or denying, they'll need to also adopt these statements. One of the statements that is required is a statement of plan consistency. This is a procedural requirement for the board to consider. Is this rezoning consistent with our applicable plans? Or is this text amendment, this change to the zoning ordinance, is it consistent with our applicable plans? Now, this statement does need to be unique to this project. It needs to reflect the details of this project. But it does not have to be a multi-page extended discussion of all the ways it's consistent or inconsistent. It can be a simple, straightforward statement, but it needs to be unique to this project and dig into how and why is this project consistent with our plans or not. This statement of plan consistency, it's required for all zoning decisions, whether it's getting approved or denied, and it's for rezonings and text amendments. Now, important to note, this can be one motion to approve the rezoning and the consistency statement. That's perfectly fine. But there does need to be formal action to adopt the consistency statement. These statements can be drafted in advance, and so staff can help draft a potential consistency statement that's included as part of the packet. There could even be an option A and option B, where one is for, yes, it's consistent. The other is for, no, it's not consistent. Either way is fine. Also, the governing board can craft its own statement as it's deliberating and coming up with it. But there does need to be a statement, and there needs to be formal adoption of it. Now, important to note that this does not mean that the plan has to be consistent. This is a procedural requirement, not a substantive requirement. It is perfectly fine for the governing board to say, this is not consistent with our plans, and we're going to do it anyway. In North Carolina, comprehensive plans and land use plans are not binding. We can make policy decisions that go against the plan. But we are... We do have to at least consider that plan and state whether this is going to be consistent or not. In some cases, there's going to be a decision of inconsistency. If that's on a rezoning case, then the zoning amendment has the effect of also amending any future land use map in the approved plan. So if the governing board says, this is not consistent with the map, but we're going to do it anyway, then that rezoning action effectively and by law changes that future land use map to align with this rezoning, essentially saying, the governing board has now stated what its policy preference is. Let's have that reflected in the future land use map. So we've got to adopt a statement of plan consistency. If the decision is a rezoning, we also have to adopt... The governing board has to adopt a statement of reasonableness. The statement of reasonableness is protection against a claim of spot zoning. In North Carolina, spot zoning is legal if it's reasonable. And so this statement of reasonableness is providing the rationale for why this rezoning is not spot zoning. The factors that are included in the statute are the factors that our courts look at when they're considering spot zoning. Things like the characteristics of this particular site and the surrounding sites, balancing the benefits and detriments of the property owner and the neighbors, the relationship between what's currently there or could be there and what's proposed, and the broader public interest and the ways in which this might be a necessary action. These statements of reasonableness, the governing board needs to adopt these for any rezoning or zoning map amendment. Worth noting here that you can have one statement that is a statement of plan consistency and reasonableness. That's totally fine. But there does need to be a formal statement for the decision that needs to be formally adopted by the governing board with their decision. So then we come down to the vote. It used to be the case that in some circumstances, there was a requirement for a supermajority. That's no longer the case for these legislative decisions. For a rezoning or for a text amendment, a simple majority of the members who are not excused, the members who don't have a conflict of interest, is all that's needed in order to pass this... Make this decision, legislative decision. There's not a need for a supermajority, even on the date of introduction. It used to be the case that on the date of introduction, even for zoning matters, there was a need for a supermajority. For zoning, that is no longer the case. There was a statutory fixer-back. There also used to be an option for protest petitions, where if enough neighbors got together and signed a petition, then that could force a supermajority decision for these rezoning matters. That's no longer the law in North Carolina. That was taken off the books. So if your ordinance still has protest petition, you'll want to update that to align with current law. All right. All right, so we have walked through the general legal framework for zoning decision-making, things like open meetings, public records, and conflicts of interest. We've talked about the application and staff review, planning board role in giving advice and making recommendation on plan consistency, and their requirements for the governing board, notice, legislative hearing, and the decision-making process for the board. With that, we have covered the steps of this state law with regard to legislative development decisions like rezonings. That's all we've got for now.
All right, we've got five done. We come back for our next meeting to start out in judicial process E module. Just like recap, our next meeting will be Tuesday, October 28th at 7:00 PM. And that's all we have tonight, so we're at a point where I ask for a motion to adjourn.
Motion to adjourn.
So we have a motion to adjourn, do we have a second? We have a second, all who's in favor of adjourn, a second, I?
I.
Anybody opposed? There are none. I'd like to thank everybody for coming tonight. I know it's getting kind of late, so let everybody go ahead and get home.